Concerned for a lot of people, Ryan, we have talked about later in the program about the advisory elevation levels. But we, you know, in the program, the mitigation program, we have techniques that we can show you how to elevate some of your utilities, some of your appliances at a minimum to reduce some of the damages to those in the future so they won't be so costly to you. And also, we can talk about how the mitigation program talks about the buyout program, relocation program, the acquisition program. So there's lots of different options in your mitigation that you have to go through the process to think about when you're looking at the damages to your house and how to best prepare yourself for the future for maybe some of those damages. And the last thing I would mention is, when you're going through the grant program or any of the changes that you're going to do to your house, you have to work with the township zoning and planning people. They're the people to administrate the zoning code and the plans applicable for any type of mitigation that you're going to do to either a house or any type of grants. We only give out advisory information, helpful information through them, but they're the actual individuals that you need to work with in your communities.
And again, just to go over the whole definition, kind of what mitigation is, it's taking actions now to protect your life and property from future disaster damages. Just by showing hands, how many people here are looking to do elevations? How many acquisitions? Okay. How about, uh, how many substantially damaged properties that we know of? Substantially damaged, my, uh, well, substantially damaged properties, when more than 50% of your structure is beyond repair, has been damaged. What's that?
Again, Harold, I'll explain this. Substantially damaged definition is if you receive 50% damage to your structure compared to the market value of the structure, and who determines that is the local floodplain administrator. The definition is in the local flood law, um, your local flood law, so it does come down to the local floodplain administrator to finally make that formal determination.
Hold on, hold on. If I may, what I'm going to ask you guys to do is, any questions that you may have, either jot them down and save them for the end when the public session is open, okay? Save them for the end when you'll have an opportunity to speak. You'll be able to come to the microphone and ask your questions. Right now, they're just giving you an overview, okay? Please be respectful.
And a lot of times, we like to throw those questions out there just to get a gauge as to what's happening in communities or what the thought process is and where we need to really focus our efforts. We only have a limited amount of funding. I don't know what the total dollar amount is now. Like I said before, we got 15%. Say the total damage is a billion, we'll end up with, this is just for example, 150 million. So we have to spread that throughout the damages within the state. So we also have a long-term recovery aspect up at the joint field office in Lynn Croft that are looking to combine different types of funding to, to help residents out as, as best as possible. So, uh, that's where we stand at this point with mitigation.
Well, good evening. I'm with individual assistance and I'm here to try to answer some of your questions.
No, I'm there.
I know all of you have a lot of questions and that's why we're here. We're trying to clarify your, your concerns. I know, uh, like, some of you are going through a hard time.
We're waiting now.
Yes, I do, sir. I know. Uh, well, like I said, I'm here to answer some of your questions. We're here, uh, to provide information. Maybe you have, uh, concerns about rental assistance, uh, temporary housing, so we're going to be here, we're going to be in the back, and we're welcome for you to go over to the table so we can answer all of the questions. Another thing is that, remember, this is a case by case that we can answer these questions because I cannot answer a question that maybe your neighbor got and you didn't. You know, this is all a case by case. So you're welcome to ask all the questions and I'll try to give you an answer.
I have a question, Mr. Murphy. I have a question. Do you know anything in regards of trailers coming here? Do you know anything in regards of trailers coming here?
Trailers.
I, I just, oh. Oh, okay. Never mind.
Okay. All right. And like I said, I'm going to pass it over to my coworker here from SPA, which I will, uh, tell all of you, if you all got an SPA application, please, please, do complete that application. It's part of the process. Without that, without completing that part of the process, you'll never ever know if we FEMA are going to be able to help you. Complete that part of the process and SPA will probably get you back like you were before or even better.
Thank you. Yeah, SPA offers federal disaster loans to all homeowners, renters, businesses of all sizes. Now, we just offer the program and, and if you come up short, just keep that in mind. If, if you don't get the money that you need from your insurance, other agencies, as far as FEMA's help, if you come up short, we're going to be able to assist you. And our program consists of, uh, for homeowners, we can lend you up to 200,000. This would be after insurance deducted, any other agencies as I mentioned. 40,000 for personal property, and these loans are, are going to be written as low as 1.688%. Can be up to 30 years for repayment. That's individual assistance now that's kind of tied in with the FEMA program. And as she mentioned, you need to fill out that application if you got it. It's very important that you get it. You don't have to take the loan. However, if we decline you for any reasons whatsoever, we refer you back to FEMA and you may have other assistance. So if you get approved for the loan, it's up to you if you decide want to take it. It is, it's just a pretty good loan program, actually, 30 years for repayment as low as 1.688. We do also, uh, offer for businesses, because we are the small business administration, even though, majority of our loans are made to homeowners, renters. Businesses are, uh, being offered up to 2 million and, and that's for, you could have both physical damage or economic injury. And a business that necessarily didn't have physical damage can get economic injury losses as well. I'm an ex-banker, so I, I, this is a pretty good program for the fact that it's a 4% fixed rate, up to 30 years for repayment. A big key then is, uh, I think, uh, we got a deadline, and this is a deadline to get registered with FEMA, is January 30th. And then to get your application back in for physical damage, this is homeowners, renters, businesses that had physical damage, you need to get that package back into us, uh, Jan- by January 30th. We have loan reps in all the centers. That's the best place to go if you've got questions about SPA, is get to one of our centers, they'll help. It's always good to get face-to-face, uh, answers. If you can't, you can call our 800 number, and we have customer service reps available, We have flyers that we'll have in the back to answer all questions as well after the program here, but it has all that information on there. Thank you.
Again, my name is Rich Savod and I'm the insurance specialist for FEMA Region 3. I was in a similar meeting last night, that the audience is size as well, and so I've got the understanding that there are a number of questions out there that are related to insurance, your claims settlement process, what have you. Probably the most frequent question is, what's taking so long to get my check? And, uh, there's no, uh, easy answer to that one that's going to, uh, make the process move along any quickly, but, uh, I'm going to tell you what you already know, and that was that Sandy was a very catastrophic event, probably the second most catastrophic event in the National Flood Insurance Program. There were well over 70,000 losses filed just here in the state of New Jersey and another 50,000 or more in New York, so probably about 140,000 losses all told filed so far on the basis of the National Flood Insurance Program. And the amount of losses that we're talking about is pretty overwhelming. The system was not designed to accommodate a catastrophic loss, and we've taken a few steps to try to speed the process up as much as we possibly can. And those steps are administrative and, uh, um, the sad fact of the matter is, as much as we try to streamline the process, there's still that huge number of losses and the huge number of people like yourself that need to be visited by an adjuster, have their loss scoped out, and let the process take its course. And as difficult as it may be, the best possible thing that anybody can do is to try to work as well as they can with their adjuster and let the process take its course as quickly as possible. It's important for you to remember that your adjuster doesn't get paid until you get paid. So they're working as hard as they possibly can to move that loss along.
Who would have the insurance company?
I'm sorry?
Who would have the insurance company? Why would the insurance company pay?
Okay. Well, we take in, uh, questions a little bit later on and I'll be happy to answer that question, but I just want to make a couple of introductory remarks first. Uh, the, uh, problem solving in the program, again, given the sheer number of losses, we do have a very small number of people who are taking calls, referred to them by our disaster recovery centers. So those of you who may have visited a disaster recovery center, talked to mitigation specialists, those calls may have been referred to, again, a relatively small group of people who are trying to respond to calls as best they can. Quite honestly, just about every able-bodied person that we have that has any expertise in the National Flood Insurance Program is out in the field somewhere trying to help people and to try to move that process along as best as we possibly can. Uh, the, uh, process of loss settlement, and I saw the large number of hands that went up for structures that are substantially damaged. You're probably already aware of this, but if you have a flood insurance policy, if your structure is located in a high-risk area and it's declared substantially damaged by the community, one of the things that your flood insurance policy includes is something called the increased cost of compliance coverage, or ICC. And that ICC benefit can provide up to $30,000 for residential structure for relocation, elevation, and demolition. And, uh, and all that money may be enough, keep in mind that the increased cost of compliance up until about 15 years ago didn't exist at all. So certainly a worthwhile benefit and, uh, that benefit is something that we'll be working with individual property owners on. And I stress the word individual. Everybody's situation is different, everybody is an individual, and what may be the right answer for you may not be the right answer for the person next to you. So again, we're here trying to work as much as we can. With large groups like yourself, well, we work most effectively on an individual basis and it takes us a while to get to all the individuals involved. After the, uh, program has taken its course here, I and a number of people will be, uh, around to try to talk to as many people as we possibly can who may have questions. Thanks.
Excuse me, about the ICC clause. I looked at the ICC clause. It doesn't say anything like that's being substantially damaged. It seems to be what you're gonna have is the municipal city ordinance or a state law that would require that.
Yes, a declaration of substantial damage by your local community. FEMA cannot declare your structure substantially damaged. That can only be done by your local officials.
My point is that if you read the policy, it doesn't say anything about substantial damage. It says if there's this ordinance passed, a floodplain ordinance passed or a substantial, so I wonder where all of this substantial damage is coming from.
Second laws or not?
Okay, hold, hold on to your questions, please. You guys can come to the microphone, you'll have more than plenty of opportunity to ask your questions, please.
Answer your questions.
Excuse me, I'll be happy to answer questions. The increased cost of compliance is in response to the ordinance, floodplain ordinance that's been passed by a local community. Every ordinance has language related to a substantially damaged structure. And that substantial damage can come by way of flood, by way of fire, by way of any other cause whatsoever. But the National Flood Insurance Program's ICC benefit applies to structures that have been declared substantially damaged by the local community.
Okay, when they come around and do this to expect them to say that happened?
The adjuster that scoped out.
Now, now, what's the township coming around and saying this happened?
When you apply your ordinance.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to leave that question to the township. Thanks.
This is, uh, I'm, please, please be respectful. I'm Ryan Puccimoli and, uh, like I said before, I was with, I'm with Region 8, and I'm, uh, leading up the, the group of individuals that's putting together the advisory base flood elevations. So I know that there's quite a bit of misinformation about those maps, and I'm hoping that, uh, over the course of this evening, I can clear up, um, much if not all of that. Your community has adopted and regulates off of a flood insurance rate map right now. That's the same flood insurance rate map that dictates the elevation in the zone with which your homes are currently built, and it's the same flood insurance rate map that the flood insurance program assigns or, uh, breaks flood insurance policies off of. That flood insurance rate map is based on information that's about 30 years old. So FEMA, working with FEMA, working with the state and our local jurisdictions, has been, over the last two years, updating that, that flood insurance rate map. And so, as part of this update process, we were about 80% done at the time had sent, uh, Hurricane Sandy occurred. So we knew, because we were 80% done, that the risk profile had gone up. We don't, nobody in this room drives the same car that they drove 30 years ago. The technology's gotten better, our scientific understanding of hurricanes and flooding has gotten better, and so we were in the process of using that new knowledge to update flood insurance rate map. We didn't have it finished when Hurricane Sandy occurred, but we knew, based on where we were, that the profile of your risk had gone up. So we developed, um, an advisory base flood elevation, and that advisory base flood elevation shows, um, an elevation that is a bit higher, as well as some new zones. Uh, or zones that, uh, can, uh, the V-zone, for example, that continues a little bit further in. Uh, these maps leave some pretty, some, some tough decisions for your community to make, but they're the right decisions. Um, your community needs to decide if they're going to adopt this in whole and regulate off of it, and if they do, that means something for each of you. If they don't, you still have this information, and this information can inform how you, how it is that you rebuild. And those are your decisions. Each of you is going to write a different story on how you recover from this, um, over the coming days, weeks, months, and years, and I wish it was days, but, um, having been through this in a number of communities around the country, it is going to take a little bit longer than just a couple of days. I don't have a magic wand, I wish I did, because I know that each of you are struggling with some really rough decisions. So we felt, knowing that the, because the hazard profile had gone up, we felt that it was better for you guys to have this information. So as you rebuild, you can rebuild in an informed way, you can rebuild to the zone that are on those maps, and you can rebuild in a manner that's going to make you less susceptible and more resilient to future hurricanes that occur. Because the one thing that I can unfortunately guarantee you, that at some point in time there will be a storm. It could be bigger, it could be smaller, but there's going to be another storm. And so these elevations that are being put out on these advisory maps, um, are quite, quite important for you, and I encourage your community to adopt and regulate off of these, and I encourage each of you to understand what this risk means for you as an individual, understand how it's going to inform how it is that you do rebuild, and I hope that each of you use this information to make informed decisions as you go out and rebuild. So there's going to be individuals, or we're going to answer questions tonight on the advisories, and there's going to be individuals in the foyer where you entered from, that can answer some individual questions and assist you in how to make determinations and how to understand the information that's on these advisory base flood elevations. Maps, the one thing I'm not going to be able to do is give you a zone and an elevation for each individual sitting in the room tonight as you walk up to the microphone. But what I can do is have some people that can assist you with that out in the hallway. And there's a couple of things that I'm encouraging each of you to do. This information, if you haven't been there, is on a website, region with a numeric two, coastal.com. And that website's got a lot of information on how to rebuild, it's got a lot of information on, and it has a tool that allows you to function your address and it will show you your zone and the elevation that we're recommending that you build back above. There's also...
Repeat that one, Tom.
Yep, I'll, let me repeat it, and then also, out, on your way out, there's a little card that's got that information on it, but it's region2, and that's a numeric two, coastal.com. And there's going to be these cards, they'll be handed out, um, I think we can probably start some circulating through the audience, and they'll be available in the foyer when we're done. There's two other things that are going to be available out there. One of those is Hurricane Sandy base flood elevation, it says ABFVs on it. This is a fact sheet on why it is that the agency working with Region 2 and the state put these out, and what they mean. The second document is, um, Hurricane Sandy, and it's, uh, how to use these advisory base flood elevations to build back in a more resilient fashion. So that's my introductory remarks, I'm going to turn it now back over to, um, the city here, and we'll address questions, I guess, as they come up.
Ryan, thank you. Just one thing I did forget, uh, I, on behalf of myself and all the elected officials, I want to give an extra special thanks to Pine Lands Regional High School and the staff and the janitors for taking the time and setting this up tonight. I just want to make sure that they got recognition. Thank you. One other quick thing, as Ryan did touch upon, perhaps, hopefully, none of us in this room ever see it again, another storm. However, Sunday night, this coming Sunday night, 8:00 PM, if you have an opportunity, if you're not watching football, CNN is going to have a very, very informative special on future weather patterns and weather storms. It might be something for all of us to take a look at or just take a peek at. Uh, Sunday night, 8:00 PM, it's on CNN, okay? At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our town engineer, Jim Ors, and he's going to give you a brief explanation. What I'm also going to let you know is, when Jim is finished, we are going to open it to the public. What I'm going to ask you to do is, you're going to need to come to the microphone, so you may want to start coming in and get lined up. Please, once again, be respectful, allow everyone to listen to the question and listen to the answer, so that everyone can get the answers that they are looking for. We will, once again, stay here as long as it takes to try to get each and every one of you in the room as much help as we possibly, possibly can. Jim Ors?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Gorman. Can everybody hear me? I'll try and speak up a little bit, because there's a little bit of activity going on in the room. Again, I'm Jim Ors, I'm the township engineer, uh, and Ryan did a very good job talking about the advisory base flood maps. Those are the FEMA's maps that they've put out as a guideline for communities that are, that are going to be in a rebuilding process. And as he said, they're an advisory base map. They're, they're giving a guideline to you as a resident of Little A Harbor Township so that you can understand, um, what level of risk that you're at in terms of not only the elevation, but the type of flood zone that you're in. One of the things that I think is also important to understand with regard to the, these advisory base flood maps, uh, is that, again, they, they were started some time ago and were being updated prior to, uh, this storm event, the Sandy storm event. With regard to that, um, they, the modeling that they've used, I don't believe includes the Sandy-specific data. Is that correct? Yeah, that's correct. We looked at 60 years worth of data and it didn't include Hurricane Sandy, but it included storms that were substantially similar. Similar. So, the, the reason why I say that is, if you were to look at what Sandy gave in your community and then you look at the mapping that you have now, um, you might say, well, that doesn't make any sense. And, and that's predominantly because, again, the data that, that the mapping puts forth didn't specifically include Sandy, it included similar storms. So there's going to be, there's going to be certain people that, when they look at that, they're going to say, well, that doesn't make any sense. And again, this information is based on the best available information that, um, that FEMA has currently. And it may be a little conservative, but not by much. So, um, the goal of FEMA is when they're putting out these advisory elevations and the advise, and these zones, is that they want to make sure that everyone, if they build to this newer standard, won't wind up in a situation where they're lower than they need to be two years from now. Two years from now or so, there'll be a process wherein FEMA will introduce the base flood elevation maps. Those will not be advisory, um, and they will need to be, um, brought into compliance by this municipality, as with all municipalities that want to stay in the National Flood Insurance Program. So while, uh, Little A Harbor Township, the deputy mayor, mayor, and committee members are reviewing this information and they are, they have the option of adopting this base flood elevation map, the ABFVs, um, again, two years from now, there will be something very similar that will impact your, um, not only your risk, but it's also going to impact your flood insurance rates. And FEMA can speak to that in terms of what your impact on your flood insurance rates might be. But it's important to understand that these, again, advisory base flood elevations, um, they're going to give you a good guideline of where you should be building to, to minimize your risk. Having said that, the governing body has introduced an ordinance on first reading so that we can adopt these maps, but we're gathering more information. We're gathering information from builders, we're gathering information from community leaders, um, and we're trying to make sure that when these maps, if they, if they are adopted, that it's the right thing to do. And, and I know that deputy mayor and mayor and the rest of the committee are working very hard to do that. We're also looking at, from a township perspective, we're looking at all the ordinances that may be impacted by homes that need to build to a higher, uh, standard. And by that I mean, there could be homes that are on, uh, an undersized lot that would need to, um, have a variance, so we're trying to identify how we can help those homeowners. Uh, in addition, we're looking at side yard setbacks and front yard setbacks for things such as air conditioning, uh, condensing units, steps, and the like. So, um, from the township's perspective, we're working very hard to try and identify all of the ancillary impacts that come along with rebuilding, um, to this new standard if you choose to do so. There, there's also, uh, some questions, again, about the substantially damaged determination. Just as a reminder, that, again, is, it's based on 50% of your structure value only, not your land and your structure. And it's the, the cost to repair the structure to pre-damaged condition. So if you are substantially damaged, that means if your home was worth $100,000, not the home and the land, just the structure, if the home was worth $100,000 and your damage, uh, your bill to repair the damage only is $50,000, you would meet that 50% guideline and you should, um, you should be, um, reaching out to your insurance company and, and you also need to obtain a substantial damage determination from this municipality. So, again, from, you know, from an overall standpoint, I'm here to answer questions that may be effective to the township ordinances and also any township-related issues. So with that, Deputy Mayor Gorman.
Okay, thank you, Jim. What I'm going to do is now open this to the public, and I will alternate back and forth. Again, please be respectful, allow the questions to be asked and allow them to be answered. And hopefully, we'll be able to get through this and get everybody's question answered to a satisfactory. I'm going to start with ladies first. If you would kindly just give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Susan Lawler. The house I owned and lived in before the flood was at 58 Lake Superior Drive. I've already had an adjuster come out, it's been two months, I've heard nothing. Um, I don't know who my local flood administrator is. I don't know, I went to the township, I asked them what process asked them what the process was. Apparently, the township doesn't know what it is, because they told me that it was assessed value, 50% of assessed value. And I don't know what, if you're saying market value, is that the same as assessed value? Okay, where do you get market value from? Because my house is destroyed, there's no way to see what the market value was before.
The answer to your question is that, it's 50% of, it can be what the flood claim administrator determines to use, but it needs to be consistent throughout the town. I believe you're using assessed value. So it would be, your repair, your cost of repair would need to be 50% of the assessed value...
The assessed value.
Of this structure only.
No! It's true what it is.
So, if, if you could, please, that is my understanding of how Little Lake Harbor Township, and actually, many, many homes, or I should say, many townships are using the assessed value, because that is an acceptable practice to use with regard to determining a substantially damaged structure.
That's 50% of the assessed value before I appealed to have my back on floating.
It's the assessed value of whatever's on the books currently.
As of the date of the flood.
As of the date of the flood, yes.
And who was our local flood administrator that comes out and decides whether you're substantially damaged?
That is Mark Ellis. He's the flood claim manager.
And where is he located in the...
He's in Little Lake Harbor Township, 665 Radio Road, in Town Hall.
Okay.
I think it's important to remember, if you've been impacted by the flood, if you've had the flood waters come in contact with your home...
Four feet.
You need to, you need to understand that it's important that you're going to need to get a flood determination, a substantial damage determination.
From where?
From Little Lake Harbor Township, go to Town Hall, go to the Building Department, and they'll be able to direct you.
Because I'm at 5.9 feet on the flood elevation, I'd hate to have a surveyor come out, the new recommendation is 12 feet, so I have to go up at least eight. Where's the money for that?
Well...
I can't get out one of those loans, I barely make enough to pay the mortgage I have.
And I understand, and I understand exactly how you feel, because I have...
I don't know what to do, because I'm homeless, and I'm not seeing any future for me on Lake Superior Drive.
And the reason why I say that is because I had water in my house too, and I'm in a very similar boat to you, with you. And quite honestly, that's why the FEMA representatives are here tonight. So if you have a question, and I'll turn it over to FEMA, the funding and grant options that they have are here, they can tell you about them, but they include small business loans, they include hazardous, they include mitigation grants, they include, they include the increased cost of compliance rates. So with that, I would ask that FEMA provide some additional information with regard to the grant program, the loan program, and the ICC program.
Sir, would you just kindly give your name and address, please?
My name is Dave Fisher, I'm a 22...
Please?
22 Atlantis Boulevard. My name is Dave Fisher, I'm a 22 Atlantis Boulevard. Question, the process, how do you initiate the process to get them to come out to make the assessment, that you're 50% done? What is the actual action we have to take in order to get them out?
Contact, I would ask you to contact the Building Department at 665 Radio Road, and they'll have, they'll have documents for you to fill out, and they will have, they will be able to make the substantial damage determination for you. If you have additional information that can help them with that, such as contractor's estimates and/or a proof of loss statement from your insurance company, that is also helpful. You also should have a copy of your elevation certificate available, because that can help identify your flood elevation, the elevation of your home currently. I would also, again, suggest that you go to the Region2Coastal.com website, and look at what, that's the website that we've been talking about, that will show your home and what the proposed flood elevation is in accordance with those maps.
Okay. Now, the next question is, what zones are considered to be high hazard?
Sure, FEMA designates two different types of zones as high hazard or special flood hazard areas. On your current map, most of the area in Little Lake Harbor Township is designated as special flood hazard area, it's Zone AE. So A designates the high hazard, and E indicates that we determine what the flood elevation would be during the 1% annual chance flood of a 100-year flood. So a lot of the area that's currently in special flood hazard areas designated AE, Zone AE elevation eight feet above B and C level, so that's the height of the flood. The other type of designation that we have for high hazard is for coastal high hazard, so we use a V or VE designation there. The V stands for velocity, and what it indicates is that the flood is also accompanied by wave action, and the waves in a VE zone can be three feet or higher. So, doesn't mean that you can't have wave action in the AE zone, but the waves will not be, they will be three feet or less in that area, still damaging waves, still high hazard, but not as hazardous as the VE zone. VE zone is considered the most hazardous zone in the best of the area of the house.
Okay, so we're using the current regulations, so if I'm an AE now, and I'm zoning to a D, I'm still a high hazard?
That's correct, yes.
Good question.
Repeat the question. Okay. I am currently an AE, I've been moved up to a D, but because the AE is a high hazard, I qualify as a high hazard zone, correct?
That's correct. You were, you said you are currently in AE zone on the current 2006 flood insurance rate map for Ocean County.
That's correct.
The advisory map, that makes, that makes you said as advisory D. So that's the term we're using on our advisory maps, as advisory A or advisory V, so that's still high hazard, yes.
Just to take it one step further, if somebody else was below that, and they went to an AE, or they're going to an AE on the advisory, would they qualify?
And I want to clarify, qualify for...
The ICC, look.
For an ICC. I'm going to let one of the insurance specialists answer that question.
The ICC coverage, make sure it's clear, the ICC coverage applies to structures that are either located in special flood hazard areas at the time of the loss, or determined retroactively to be in a special flood hazard area by virtue of the community adopting the advisory zone.
Thank you, I think that answers a lot of your questions.
You're welcome.
Is this, one more, ICC, is that available in one second homes or only non-practical?
ICC is available on virtually every policy that the National Flood Insurance Program writes, including for secondary or non-primary residences.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Bart Sherbo, I live at 7 Silver Lake Court, Mr. Gorman. My question, I got like seven questions, you want to wrap it fire, or you want to answer them one at a time? Okay, here we go. I understand that there's going to be a $30,000 grant, this, I'm looking at it as a grant, to raise your house. This is true? If you're in a...
The ICC.
See better. Are you referring to the increased cost of compliance coverage as part of your National Flood Insurance Program policy?
Yes.
Because what I'm trying to differentiate is, that is not a grant, that's coverage that you pay for.
Okay. So why is it so high, though? Why is, why does it cost so much money to raise a house, why is it $30,000? Why?
He saw the cheap end of that one.
Why, you know, it costs like $17,000 to raise a house.
Please?
So where, who came up with...
If it only cost $17,000 to raise your house, that's all we're going to pay. The benefit is up to $30,000.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is now you've got all these guys running around giving a bitch to pay you $30,000, they're going to charge $30,000. There should be a cap on that.
That's what the $30,000 is.
Because everybody's going to charge $30,000, I could do a lot with $30,000 for my house.
We are not here to regulate, and I understand that there may be some practices out in the marketplace that are not usual.
This is like Christ now, everybody's going to charge $30,000, that's what you're charging, $30,000. What's your next question? All right, next question. Is there going to be a timeframe for this? Will there be a timeframe for this? As far as reconstructing your house or raising your house, whatever it's going to take to make it livable again?
Typically, after you receive your letter of substantial damage determination, you have up to four years to have the process taking place.
My next question is, what if the house can't be raised? What if you go to raise the house and it falls apart?
I'm not a structural engineer, but there are three different options for residents: relocation, elevation, or demolition. And it's really up to the property owner and their engineer and the local community to decide what is and what is not feasible for that particular structure.
So if you have to go for a demolition, you're only going to be awarded $30,000?
Up to $30,000.
Up to 30, that's the maximum? Am I understanding that right? That'll be the maximum?
That's the maximum benefit.
So you gotta knock a house down, you gotta drive files, now you gotta build a new house for $30,000?
No, no!
Yeah, but flood insurers don't cover it. What if you don't have flood insurance?
Do you have flood insurance?
I have flood insurance.
Yeah, so we can only talk about your situation.
Okay, well, all right, let's just talk about my situation. What if I didn't get any damage? Do I have to do anything? And if I'm in a floodway?
Please, listen up.
If you didn't get any...
I didn't get any damage, and house around flooded, and now you come in and you tell me this area, these houses have to be raised six feet. I didn't get any damage, I didn't get any water in my house. So what happens there?
Nothing.
I can take part in that. So if your community adopts and regulates to the advisory base flood elevations, substantially damaged homes, or homes that are damaged 50% or greater, with the determination letter, they will have to be built in compliance with these new, the advisory base flood elevations. If you were fortunate enough, and you didn't receive any damage in this particular event, you don't have anything you need to do. We would still recommend that you would, you know, elevate your house or take the appropriate measures, but at this time, if you were fortunate enough to have no damage, there's nothing that you need to do.
What about your insurance, though? Because I don't, this is what I heard, because there's really nothing to read about, and nobody's really answering these questions, that the insurance, if you don't take these measures on your house, that your insurance is going to raise 25% every year, for five years.
Yeah, that's it, that's, yeah, yeah. One of the things, and you're absolutely right, in referring to the recent legislation that was passed in 2012, called Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act 2012, I'm not going to give you too many of the details, but I'm going to start off by saying, the real intent of that legislation was to eliminate rating subsidies that are part of the National Flood Insurance Program. And what you're referring to is, over time, the elimination of any rating subsidy that exists in the program, so that the structure can be rated actuarially, so whatever the risk of that individual structure represents, that's the risk the premium gets charged. And if your structure today did not get damaged, fortunately, and good for you, if the structure does stand the risk in the future of being damaged because of its location and the relationship to the base flood elevation that's established for that area, the premium is going to be, excuse me, the premium is going to be based upon the risk that that structure represents for future damage. And one of the ways to reduce the amount of premium that may be payable would be to elevate that structure.
So what you're telling me is, because all of that, explain that to me in layman's terms.
I have a question about the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Act, which would be a nice follow-up, I think, if I could pose it.
Excuse me, it's, I didn't finish.
Hold on, please, this gentleman hasn't finished, hold on.
Okay.
Sir, in a nutshell, you're asking, okay, in layman's terms, if you receive, and this goes for everyone here, if you are, you're currently in a flood zone, and you did not receive any damage to your home from the storm, you're under no obligation to do any improvement to your home. At some point in time in the future, there will be meetings and an announcement when the, when the FEMA people come out with the base, the real base flood elevations, not the advisory ones. And it's important to understand that the advisory base flood elevations have no effect on your insurance premium. Only the base flood elevations, when they, when they come out, in earnest, in September of 2013, there will be a series of public meetings, where you have an opportunity to comment, I believe, and following the comment period, FEMA will adopt those maps, and then the municipality will have six months to adopt those maps, if they would like to stay in the flood insurance program. That whole process is probably two years or more, before anyone would see any net impact to, to their insurance premium. However, in the event you, you're in your home, and say you are a home that was built in 1965 or 1960, you could have a premium that has a subsidy. Upon sale or transfer of ownership of that property, there could be a change in the insurance premium for the buyer. But that really is something that FEMA can get into a little bit further, probably on a one-on-one, because it's more of a specific question. But, again, if you receive no damage, or if you were not substantially damaged, you don't need to elevate your home. It's recommended that you do, because, as we've seen, we can see a storm event that will produce these types of effects. So, and I think that's what the purpose of the advisory base flood maps are, to let everybody know that in the future, the base mapping is going to see, you're going to see an increase based on the best of their information. Okay?
And how is this going to cover secondary home? Secondary home, go. Oh, I got the bike, I'm asking a question.
Secondary homes can't be insured through the National Flood Insurance Program. Premiums for secondary homes, however, the elimination of rating subsidies for those homes has begun this month.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, just kindly give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Pat Corson, my residence is 64 Parfer Road, in Toccata, and my question concerns the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act. Does the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012 change the National Flood Insurance Program grandfather clause? For example, if I have an enforced flood policy rated when my home was in Zone 86, and my zone changes to a V, will my home continue to be rated in A6? Or will it be rated as a V for myself and for anyone to whom I sell it to in the future if they continue with the same insurance carrier? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll try it. One of the triggers for the elimination of rating subsidies is a map change. You just indicated that your map is changed from an A to a V zone, which means that the rating subsidy for that structure represented by map grandfather is going to begin to be eliminated.
So, the grandfathering that was established, and that my insurance adjuster, my flood insurance adjuster, has advised me of, is no longer in effect, the grandfathering clause.
It's in effect as long as your map doesn't change.
My map changed, so therefore, what my insurance adjuster has been telling me is
I'm not, I wasn't there for the conversation.
I have an email, I would be happy to share that with you, and to get your comments on that email, when this is concluded.
Are you seeing the zone change? Are you seeing the zone change as a result of what you're seeing on, on the advisory maps?
Yes, the zone will change.
So just to be really specific, the advisory maps at this particular time are advisory. They're informational maps so that communities can make informed decisions. We think that, and we're fairly certain, that the flood insurance rate map, when it's updated two or more years from now, will reflect these same zones and elevations. But the advisory base flood elevation maps do not impact people's insurance premiums today.
Today, but what about in five years? What about if I sell my home? And I've got, instead of a five hundred dollar insurance policy, it's costing me ten thousand dollars a year? The marketability of my home has significantly decreased. And I wanna know what the impact is now.
If I can just respond to one other issue. If you haven't already done so, you probably should be talking to your insurance agent about the rating of the policy. The adjuster is simply there to adjust the law.
That's who I'm talking to. My insurance agent is telling me that I will be grandfathered. And you're telling me that I, or the future buyer, will not be grandfathered.
The legislation is relatively recent. Your insurance agent may not be aware of the changes that that legislation is causing.
Well, Selective Flood also has been contacted about this. And they apparently are not aware either because my agent and Selective Flood, the underwriter, the lead underwriter for this area, has informed us that we and any future buyers, if we continue with that policy, if they grant, will be grandfathered going forward.
That's not the way the Bigger Waters legislation reads.
Would you like to comment, ma'am? We've read the Bigger Waters legislation. We would appreciate it if you could show us where it negates the grandfathering.
I don't think the term "map grandfathering" is used anywhere in the legislation.
It's not.
What it does provide is certain triggers to the elimination of rating subsidy. And a map change is one of those triggers.
So, I better, when I make the changes to my home, which was not substantially fifty percent damage, but when I make the change, repair my home, I need to be thinking about the marketability of that home to someone else. And my flood insurance will go up ten thousand a year if I am not in total compliance with the V-zone regulations.
I'm not sure of the exact figures, but if you agree with you one hundred percent, your rates will increase.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Hi, Charles Newmeyer, I'm Chesapeake Court. Like to thank the township.
Listen up, folks, please.
Like to thank the township officials for putting on this meeting tonight. I have two questions and then maybe a word of caution. My first question is, seven years ago, after Hurricane Katrina, the residents of Louisiana that were affected had the opportunity to obtain, in addition to their thirty thousand dollar ICC limit on their policy, an additional seventy-five thousand dollars to raise their house. Unfortunately, a lot of contractors ran off with the money and there were a lot of problems from that. In my hand, I have a spreadsheet showing my cost to raise my house of just under fifty thousand, and that's not including some, some items that haven't made it in this yet. Is there any consideration, is there any talk about increasing this limit of thirty thousand retroactively in order to help make us whole? Because thirty thousand's just not gonna get the job done.
And to answer your question directly, to answer your question directly, I have not heard of any talk of retroactive changes to the ICC benefit. Coming from an insurance point of view, I was surprised at some of the changes that were included in the Bigger Waters legislation. And I was just as surprised at some of the changes that were not included in the Bigger Waters legislation. And I would thought that if Congress intended to change the benefit of the inclusive cause of the pond, they would have done it through that legislation.
Well, I'm sorry, but this additional seventy-five thousand was awarded to homeowners after Katrina. So I'm not really sure why this should have been a part of the Bigger Waters Act.
I don't know where the seventy-five thousand dollars that you're referring to came from.
It's called, the program was called the Road Home. Okay, it was a real program, I'm not imagining this. Can we get some discussion in the FEMA offices at HQ? Maybe we can do something to help?
To best my knowledge, the Road Home was not a FEMA-run program.
Okay, but it was federal money. So whether it runs through FEMA or it runs through some other government program...
Right, and I, I understand your point. I can talk to you about the National Flood Insurance Program and benefits that are available under, as for any federal programs that may or may not have taken place, then I'm not fault my direction.
Oh, Rich, I'll, I'll jump on this a little bit, sir. The Road Home program, I do not exactly have all the details about that, but I, there's two programs that may come up. There's one program that's definitely becoming available, part of the staff for that, which is the program that Sergeant Gallagher mentioned, which is a hazard mitigation grant program, which fifteen percent of the value of this disaster puts into a pot of money to be eligible for New Jersey residents, communities to apply to, which elevation is one of the eligible projects. That money can go along with your ICC money to help you elevate. It is a limited pot of money, it's a very competitive. The Road Home program, I think, was part of the supplemental funding that came after Katrina. So, again, what happens here in New Jersey, we don't know yet. But there is a staff for that money, called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program money, which can go towards elevating homes. How much money that is, we don't know yet. What the need is out there is great. So that's, again, Sergeant Gallagher mentioned, it could be the briefing on this program with Ocean County on Monday. Explain to the community official, the community official, people apply on behalf of the homeowners for this program. Explain the process and to gather information on the need. If I saw the hands I could offer, he's talking about three hundred, four hundred homes being that might be substantially damaged. So we understand there's a significant need out there. And there are discussions about this in regards to our office.
Reg, could you please keep us informed of that when we have a township meeting?
Absolutely, sir. And the governing body has been attending all of the FEMA meetings up at Tombs River so that we get every possible representation and information we can. And that's how we will relay it back. And in fact, if it takes us to hold another meeting just like this so that we can get as much information out to you, we will do so.
Oh, thank you. There are a lot of people here and they're lost. I spent quite a bit of time in the administration building, construction department. And it's, it's just, it's amazing. There are seventy thousand claims, I believe you said, in New Jersey, fifty thousand in New York. Just last week, New York was awarded a nine-point-six million dollar grant by FEMA. I'll read. The state of New York and the Federal Emergency Management Agency announced that more than nine-point-six million in federal funds has been made available for the disaster case management program, which is fully funded by FEMA and administered by the state. What is this program? Case managers will assist disaster survivors in developing a goal-oriented plan for their recovery. And this program lasts for two years for each person. Is there any talk of having funding for this type of program in New Jersey? Because people need it.
There is one here in New Jersey. We do have that program here.
It's not funded by FEMA. It's, it's handled by Catholic Charities USA. And I guarantee you, it's a fraction of what our brothers and sisters in New York are receiving.
Well, like I said, we do have one case management here. I can't talk very much about that program. I'm, I, that's not my name. But I do know that we do have it here. And there is a case manager in every county, in every DRC. It should be one to take care of the people's and the community.
How can a case manager take care of, one case manager in every county? Take care of thousands of people affected by storms?
Sir, could I, could I touch on this just a minute? On the IA liaison from the JFO to this county? And we do have case management programs at both New York and New Jersey. So we have case managers and they are just, they are Catholic charities as a contractor. So they are out in the back and they have been here. And they will, you can go to the DRC and talk to them and we'll get you a case manager if you need a placement. Pardon me? You assigned one a month ago and you haven't been called back? Okay. I can't hear you, I'm sorry. When you get up to the microphone, we, we, we'll take anyone's name that wants information on that and we'll get, it's contracted through Health and Human Services and FEMA. So that, that's what the case manager, it's, it's under our, one of our programs. The kinds, we have crisis counseling, disaster unemployment, disaster-related services, and disaster case management.
Okay. To get short, my, my last comment is, when you fill out that warrant to get your taxes reduced, keep in mind that when you list your house as substantially damaged and you don't intend to raise your house, you merely want to get a temporary reduction in your property taxes, you're gonna wind up out of the raise your house. So think twice before you turn that form in.
So, my name's Tim Long, I'm at one thirty-seven North Spinnaker, Mystic. This is to the SBA gentlemen, please. I filed my paperwork for the SBA loan and they said I don't qualify. Who did I get referred back to?
Well, you're, were you declined or?
Yes.
Okay. Will it refer that back to the FEMA other assistance program? Who was what it's referred to? And keep in mind, I wanna throw this out too. If we decline, it doesn't mean you're completely done with the SBA. You, you will get a six-month reconsideration right later. So you could come back for whatever the reasons we declined it, to come back and see if we can get you approved that later.
They declined me because it was my second home.
Then I don't believe FEMA's gonna be able to help you either. Secondary homes are ineligible for this program.
Why is that?
Well...
It's my home.
Well, it's not just that way. So SBA, it's the program. The secondary homes are not eligible. And you would not be referred back in that case. Now, the only case I can think of, there's a couple. If it is a secondary home, if you have extended family, you could be eligible through SBA for the loan. Or if you have rented it out and you're drawing income on that secondary home. We do make loans. There's gonna be a lot of you that have rental properties. That comes under our business loan program. With secondary homes, I'm sorry, not eligible.
So where do I go for help now? Gentlemen, where do I go for help now? Somebody answer!
Let's go!
Will help be added your primary residence? Secondaries are tired or not?
He helped build this school too. It's too much money, you don't understand.
Ma'am, could you kindly give your name and address?
Farbella Morrisolino, sixty-seven Ocean Boulevard, Ashburn Island. My question is, can anyone give me an explanation about the CRS program?
To that, the community rating system is a, it's a voluntary program that the community can choose to join if they go above and beyond the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. It is, I'm imagining you're asking about the potential insurance reduction. If a community does join and they're participating members of the program, you can see between a five to forty-five percent reduction in insurance rates across the community. This is a longer-term process to become a participating member. It, it, they're only eligible applications for six months. And the community needs to really demonstrate the ways in which they are making the community safer. Demonstrating ways that they're getting more information out to the community about insurance and just ways that they're only above and beyond the minimum requirements of that program.
So my question now to the township is, when will you be participating and getting involved with this system for the people of the community?
That's a very good question. And actually Administrator Loesch and Assistant Administrator Formoski and myself have been working on the plan to enter into the CRS program. A part of that is to have a hazard mitigation plan. And we've also been working with the county of Ocean because they're working on their hazard mitigation plan. So that is in the works. And I would, I would estimate that we, with, in conjunction with the county completing their plan, we could wrap up and be making a submission within the next twelve to eighteen months. But that's really gonna be done in lockstep with the county's mitigation plan.
And regarding the HMGP program, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the community, for the people of Little Lake Harbor and Toccata, this money that they're getting from the state of New Jersey and federal government, this money is gonna be allocated at some point in time. Someone or somebody has to get on, involved with it more closely because what may happen is, the money may become available and we're not on board yet. So we could lose out with that kind of money, this grant program. What happens then?
I believe that the gentleman at the end of the table did touch on the hazard mitigation program. One of the things that maybe wasn't touched on was the fact that when the state gets the pot of money that was discussed. That money is a competitive pot of money and municipalities have to submit to their county, who then submits to the state. Little Lake Harbor Township will look at the program. And I can assure you that we would make submission. But I can tell you, it would be most likely that Little Lake Harbor Township, given the impact this community has seen, will be trying to participate in that program.
Thank you. And I have a question for the insurance agent. If you raise your house, sorry, if you raise your house prior to the ICC claim, sorry, I didn't mean to do that. If you, if you raise your house prior to the ICC claim, because people can't wait, a year, a year, six months, two years, thirty-four years, whatever you claim, will the insurance company reimburse those people for the cost of that, raising of that particular dwelling?
Yeah, I assume that you're raising that structure through permit and in compliance with the community's requirements.
Yeah.
And the reason I say that is, because it is all about complying with the community's requirements, as long as that is the end result of the work that you're doing, the work is reimbursed.
Okay, thank you. And to qualify for the ICC claim, can you use an appraisal to determine the true market value today, I mean, prior to standing? Can you use that to determine the fifty percent substantial damage?
Okay. If I understand it correctly, the methodology that may be used here would be based on assessed value. But there are always ways to refine the determination that may be, may have been made, especially if it's a close call determination. And it's up to the community to determine what methods of refining that determination can and should be used.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as, my other question is, is it true to comply to the new ABFE, or you wanna call it BFE, that you, in order to save a substantial amount of savings on your flood insurance per year, you would have to raise it three feet above the base flood elevation? Is that true?
The savings increase any time you go above the minimum requirement. The minimum requirement being at base flood elevation. So needless to say, a foot higher than base flood elevation, you're safer and your premium goes down. Two feet higher, you're even more safe, premium goes down further. Three feet, and so on. So yeah, you're absolutely right. The higher you go, the better you off, rather, you are for premium rating. for a premium rating, but also from a safety factor.
Okay, now I have a township question. If that takes effect on certain properties, including my yawn room, I know there's going to be other people affected by this. Once we raise the base flood elevation to what the standards are now, the ABFA, so I'm in a 12-zone, 12-base flood elevation, V-zone. If I raise my house to 12-base flood and another three feet, which is the substantial savings on the flood insurance, then I will be over and above the township zoning height restriction? And what happens next?
Actually, I can answer that for you. Please. As part of when we introduced the ordinance, certainly that then triggered to have this public hearing to get some of these feedbacks. What we also did this week is on Tuesday or Wednesday, we also met with a handful of our local builders, piling guys, to just gather some information and stuff that they were facing as far as zoning issues so that we can tweak the zoning to help you with that situation. So once we get some of this feedback this evening, we're going to... And by the way, any of the builders that are here tonight on the back table, there is a sign-in sheet. If you would like to be part and offer some assistance in some of these areas, please put your name, your address, preferably a cell phone number. We can get ahold of you or an email address and we will certainly include you in the upcoming meetings to get your input before these zoning changes are made.
And what I worry about... My concern is that if they do strike a base flood elevation maximum peak height height, that would cause a problem for some people's homes to not be able to conform. So it's kind of putting a damper on being able to go up as out of harm's way from another event taking place, whenever that may be. And if we put a peak height restriction on it, you're unlimited, that person. So I can't see how they would be able to put a peak height restriction. Should be unlimited.
I don't know if you can go unlimited. Of course, now it's at 35. The consideration is perhaps 40, 42. None of those numbers have been... is hard yet. That's part of gathering this information and trying to put all that together. But at some point, we have to tweak it.
Thank you. And if I could ask one more question, I'll be next. Okay. When will the township adopt the base flood elevation determination?
Once again, at our last township meeting, it was only introduced based upon public hearing and some of our zoning changes we have to do. Then we can put a complete package together. I would anticipate within a couple of our next meetings probably adopt it because our goal here is to try to get you folks on your way to get back to your normal life. We want to get you back as quick as possible.